Well, good evening. Thank you for coming. I really appreciate that you came out tonight. My name is Karen Disney Bromback, and I'm a school board member and also the legislative liaison for the school board. And Claudia Jimenez is here also, a school board member. And we're going to do our best to help you interpret the amendments that are going to be in the ballot in November. Actually, we're only going to touch on four of them. If you couldn't get me to touch the other one with a 10-foot pole in a big audience. But Amendment 3, Amendment 4, Amendment 8, and Amendment 10 have a potential to impact a school district. And so, we felt that if we could come out and help you understand the amendments, and then not tell you how to vote, but just help you interpret them, that you would be able to make a informed decision, and we trust that that decision will be in the streets of our district. Of course, these are statewide amendments, so any of them may vote in one way, the rest of the state votes another, and so it may not come out in the way that we're hoping it does. But we'll just have to leave that up to each district to help their constituents understand what's on ballot. As you may or may not know, school board members are prohibited by law from advocating for one position or another on an amendment. And I will happily take criticism from you if you feel like there's no way we're going to do this much, because that'll help you do that job as I've explained for half a dozen or more times in the district before the November election. So, I've decided to do this in a very informal way, and I welcome questions as we go, make sure everyone understands. I'm not going to use a microphone. I'm just going to stand here and chat with y'all. So, in front of you, you have a sheet that attempts to summarize each of the ballots, or each of the amendments on the ballot. And this is not the language that you're going to see when you read the amendment at the polls. Amendment 3 says state government revenue limitation. And what this amendment does is it replaces the existing revenue limitation based on Florida personal income growth and population. Currently, we have a limitation of 10 percent that the government cannot raise the tax rates that brings money in to run the government. And this attempts to reduce it to 5 percent. Last year, we had an amendment on the ballot that was called Tabor, which is the Taxpayer Bill of Rights. Senator Herrigopolis felt that this would be an important amendment to limit the amount of taxes that people had to pay based upon their property. What it does is it reduces, sharply reduces, the amounts of money that comes into the state government or the local government in order to run a city or municipality. So, for property owners, you may see a reduction in your property taxes, but you'll also see a parallel reduction in services from the area that you live in. It's just reality. If you lower the budget, the city government budget, you're going to have less services. So, within one family, you might have the argument because you have a house that you've had for 30 years, and your children have a house that they've just bought. Your children perhaps are utilizing the school services and you're not. And so, you may have the argument about what is best for your family. Do you reduce your property tax and lower your services that are allowed to, or do you leave it the way it is? So, as I said, there is already, hi, there's already a limit on how much they can raise it, which is 10 percent. So, this cuts that in half.
You might want to also remember that they passed a law like this in Colorado, and two years afterwards, there were so many cuts in services that they had to vote to repeal it. And once you vote in one of these amendments, it takes 60 percent of the vote to go back and repeal it. And another thing that I guess is mentioned at the beginning of this document is that these are not citizen initiatives. This is the first time that these are legislative initiatives that are being brought before the citizens. And you might want to ask yourselves if this is the tool that we need to make changes. Aren't these types of situations better left policies and procedures that are done within the legislature instead of putting them into the Constitution? When in this case, as we saw in Colorado, you decide, oh, this is a bad idea, it's going to be very difficult to remove once it's passed.
So, Amendment 4 holds hands with Amendment 3. So, where Amendment 3 limits the amount the government can raise your taxes, Amendment 4 limits the amount that the value of your property can change. So, you can see how if both of these amendments were to pass, it would have a severe limitation on the amount of money that goes into city and county governments. And while Amendment 4 makes school districts exempt, we still utilize some of the services from the county. For instance, the deputies that are in our schools are half-paid by the school district funding and half-paid by county funding. So, one of our worries would be that if there's a limitation on the money that's in the county's budget, that one of the first things they would do is cut off the peripherals, which would be us. So, county government budgets do affect school districts. Now, I'm going to skip over Amendment 8 because that's the one that will take the longest to talk about, and I believe it might provoke the most questions. And I'm going to go to Amendment 10. Amendment 10 is about businesses and their tangible property tax. I have a business, and you have to have $25,000 or more in tangible property before you tax on it, which means they would add up my trucks and my computers and my inventory and all the things that I have in my business, and I don't pay tax on it until you get over $25,000. Well, this wants to raise that to $50,000. So, while the tangible property tax is a very small amount of tax, there will be an impact to county budgets if this passes. The proponents of this are, of course, business owners and folks that are trying to lure business into the county and want to see business grow. And the opponents of this are those of us that benefit from the money that comes in from those taxes. So, if you voted yes on this, you would vote to give that exemption, increase the exemption from $25,000 to $50,000. And if you vote no, then the state is exempt. So, now we get to Amendment 8. Amendment 8 is titled Religious Freedom. And this was originally Amendment 7, and it was challenged, and it went to the courts because the title and the ballot summary did not really match what the intent of this amendment is. This is really about as religious funding. Amendment attempts to repeal the no aid provisions that goes to religious entities. Whether you vote yes or no on this amendment, your religious freedom stays intact. You still have the ability to worship as you please, worship where you please. But if you vote yes on this, you're voting to repeal the no aid provision that 37 states have in their constitution that prohibits state dollars from going to religious entities for state purposes, for the work that the state does. For instance, education. You may say, well, the state does give money to some religious entities, and they do. There are some things that qualify for the state to give money to churches. When you give money to a church, like my church, I'd say, well, my church will handle that money responsibly, and I'll bet you yours would too. But you can't eliminate all organized religion. If you say, yes, we should give money to religious entities, you open the door for all organized religions. No matter how extreme they are, they would be eligible for these dollars. So, where the school districts are concerned is that churches who run schools that do teach the religion of the church would now be able to apply for educational dollars. I think it's wonderful when people can afford to send their children to their church and have an education under the auspices of their religion. But I don't know if I want, I shouldn't ask you to pay for that, for me to send my child to church. So, this is where the argument is. Those opponents of this say, we already have religious freedom. Let's not call it religious freedom. It's about religious funding, and I don't want my tax dollars going to a church. The proponents of it say, well, this is because we need to protect religious freedom by supporting these religious entities. That is the one that's going to be very emotionally charged. If you go into the ballot box and you vote yes, you are voting to give money to churches and other religious entities. If you vote no, you are saying, do not change this amendment. Leave it just as it is. But either way, whether you vote yes or no, you still have the same religious freedom to worship as you please.
Is there any criteria for whether they have to be accredited schools to receive that funding?
Well, there's no implementation language yet. All there is is the ballot summary. And what will happen is, once it becomes an amendment, is the legislature will sit down and work out the implementation language of it, just like they did with class size. You know, people voted for class size to have certain limits in the classroom, and then the legislature took it and decided how it would be implemented. And the current version of class size does not look a lot like what the original ballot amendment was.
Because it seems like that money that would go to religious funded schools would be spent on the child if they were in a public school system. So, why not? What's the difference?
Claudia, I think there are a couple of things that are important to keep in mind. If a child is going to a public school, we have to accept them. If you have private schools, they can have criteria where some children are accepted and some children are not.
That's true.
And you're using taxpayer dollars to support organizations that in effect are not open to all children. Another issue with this is if we look back historically, there was a lawsuit during the time of Governor Bush that tried to do this in order to support vouchers, because the idea of vouchers is the same concept. You're taking your money to where your child goes. It could be a private school. It could be secular. It could be religious. And the concern with that is that there is no accountability. If you look at what's going on in education today, your public schools have to fulfill a tremendous amount of criteria and mandates that are put forth by the state. And a lot of that comes with funding attached. You do this, you get this money, that it's enough or not, it's irrelevant right now, but we're held accountable. Unfortunately, when taxpayer dollars go to private schools, when they go through vouchers, when they go to virtual schools, for example, private for-profit virtual schools, there is no accountability. So, it's very important to remember that, you know, you all belong to churches that have schools. They are probably very responsible, very respectful of children. But sadly, that is not always the norm, and it's not just churches. It's other for-profit organizations. And this would open the door for vouchers. And it's another attempt to open that door, and that's why the concept of religious freedom is at the forefront. Because anyone looks at that, and if you don't read about it, you're going to say, this is about religious freedom. And it's not about, as Ms. Disney said, it's not about religious freedom. It's about funding. And it's up to you to decide if you feel that that is appropriate. That is your choice. But it's important to see the pros and cons. Another thing to keep in mind is that a lot of these organizations are nonprofit, so they don't pay taxes, yet they would be getting taxpayer dollars to subsidize their programs. And that's another thing just to keep in mind.
And your teachers may not be certified, teachers?
There are some, there's, in virtual schools, I know for a fact, they have this tenet of 10 things that they would like to see happen in virtual schools, and that's one of them, that they don't feel that those teachers need to be certified. Currently, in Florida, virtual schools, they are supposed to be certified. But, you know, there are some of these criteria, as you said, that they don't meet, and is that really the best use of taxpayer dollars? And again, that's your call. And that's why we wanted to have this opportunity, to have this conversation, so you can look at both sides and decide, you know, with the information, what you would be willing to support. But religious freedom, whatever you vote for in this case, is going to be intact.
Now, most of you probably know that constitutional amendments require a 60 percent plus one vote. So, constitutional amendments that get voted in, as Ms. Jimenez said, rarely are overturned because it's difficult to overturn when you've already had 60 percent of the people voting yes for something. But a constitutional amendment that's been termed down by the voters can always come back. So, it's sort of a, you do have another fight at the apple, and if there's doubt with any of the amendments, whether or not you think they're good for our community. If you vote no, they can come back. If you vote yes, the chances are, whatever the unintended consequences are, we will have to live with that amendment. So, that was one of the reasons that we wanted to make sure that the language of the amendments was clear to everyone, because by the time you get to the bottom of the ballot, after all the presidents and senators and mosquito control and all that, and you get to the end of the ballot, you know, sometimes voter fatigue sets in, and some folks just check off all yeses or all nos, or they make a design, or they do something that can really impact our community. So, it's important that you ask an informed voter, you go in and are very deliberate with your vote. Are there any other questions?
Are you going with 3?
Hi.
What number are you on? Are you just calling the general?
Oh, we were just talking about Amendment 8.
Amendment 8.
Yes. We just did a basic summary of the 4, 3, 4, and 8 and 10.
Claudia, could you just go over again Amendment 4 as far as whether it's pro-business or not?
Well, Amendment 4 is about the value of your property. And the idea is that it limits the amount that your property can increase from year to year. Because, you know, back when, in the days when we had flush bank accounts, there was a lot of construction going on, there was a lot of money in the county. If the military rate stayed the same and your property value went up, a lot more money went into the county government than, say, today, where if the military rate stays the same, but your property values are going down, the county government has less to spend. So, what this attempts to do is to limit the amount it can go up, so at any one time, you don't have that steep increase on your appraised value. Now, it can still go up in your, in the resale value. It's not going to affect that. But it'll affect your property, so your property taxes don't go up so much. And what I could say about that was that the pros of that are that your property taxes don't go up, but the cons of that are when you limit the amount of money that goes into your county government, you will have to expect a drop in services as well, or not have an increase in services, and that's what's important to do.
I did notice on that one that the House of Representatives voted 105 to 11 to approve it, the Senate voted 25 to 12 to approve it. And are you proposing that we vote against Amendment 4?
Not at all. We are not allowed as school board members to advocate in any way for an issue. Our job is, what we see our job is, is to come in and help folks understand the language of the amendments, so that when they go in the ballot box, they can make an informed vote. All of these amendments have been overwhelmingly supported by the legislature. All 11 amendments came from the legislature. There are no citizen initiatives on the ballot, so you would expect that they were all supported by the legislature.
I think it's important, you know, to argue with the real voters in saying to vote no on all of them. So, important to be.
Do you recommend that?
They hold the vote.
But, you know, we're not telling you to do yes or no on any of them. Each one on its own merit, and decide what is good for you and your family and after. Yes, sir?
The comments, Ms. Jimenez, may have varied about, I guess, schools, other than public schools not really being held accountable for what they do, people not being served by the law. And I just got to tail into that, so I may not peruse all of the statements. However, if this amendment goes through, the one that can be modified in December 3, you give money to five, two churches, whatever. Don't you think that our legislature and their wisdom will put some rules and strings on that, so that the comments the young lady made might not hold water after this amendment goes through? And I'm not for getting any wild one, but the legislature has plenty of ways to constrain all things. And if they give them the money, they're going to constrain, I would imagine, maybe they gave some of the young lady's comments.
I can address that. With all respect, right now, even without this amendment, we don't have that kind of accountability. So, right now, we are seeing virtual schools, there's a virtual school right now, K-12 virtual school that is under investigation. There have been virtual schools and other types of schools that have been shut down because of misuse of taxpayer dollars. Right now, we don't have that kind of oversight. And it is unfortunate because, for example, I'm giving you the example of a virtual school. I'm not against virtual schools. I really believe that we need options for our students. We need for them to have choice. And it's their families' taxpayer dollars. But I am concerned, as a citizen and as a school board member, when we are in situations where taxpayer dollars are flowing out of the district without the due diligence and accountability. There are many examples of that happening right now. There are virtual schools in other states that have had to close due to mismanagement and misuse of taxpayer dollars. So, if that is any indication of what the legislature does or does not do, I would be very concerned to exacerbate that situation. But again, that's my personal opinion from what I've read about these issues. I'm not saying that I'm against any of these schools. But I do think we have to be, we have to have a real, honest conversation about what our legislators do and do not do in terms of accountability. And it's important to know that these incidents are true, that schools have each of them.
Do y'all feel that each of these amendments are, as I said, not have negative effect or negative impact on the funding that the county or school district will receive?
No, actually, we talked about how 4 and 10 mainly are going to affect county government because school districts are exempt from 4. And 10 is the tangible property tax, which it would help my business, but very little of that money comes into the school district, which is a very small amount, the tax is very small. But it could affect the peripheral services that are provided to schools by the county government. If the county government budget shrinks, it could, they can choose some of the peripheral things, like school resource officers said, we can't have and they can have. That would be something they have control of. They don't have control of our budget, and we don't have control of theirs, but that's a cost we share.
And that was a cost of ours.
Well, we don't have any in our district, do we? Yeah.
Yeah, David and Sebastian, we have some.
Thanks. Oh, they're paid for by City of Sebastian. Well, good. Thank you. Any other questions for discussion?
So, how many amendments are actually going to be, 11?
There's 11. They're numbered 1 through 12 because 7 is no longer there.
Okay. And these were all brought up on a?
Those were all legislative initiatives?
And it is, I agree with you, that it is easier to vote them in and harder to take them out if there's a problem. And it just astounded me that there were so many, because when you have a constitution, you shouldn't be flinging in amendments. I mean, that's, your constitution should be something that...
I can agree with that without bringing any...
And it's just surprising to me that there aren't that many. I mean, just to stand, I've always thought the constitution was what we worked off of, and very rarely do you put amendments in. I mean, it really has to be a good thing to put an amendment into your constitution. And I'm concerned that people are, because looking at the amount of people here tonight, even to hear what's going on or get some input, that people don't know what's there. And I agree with you. I think they're going to go in and just vote all yes or all no, and there hasn't been a lot of education or discussions like this, so people are aware it's going on. So, it's interesting.
Well, I think that people are sometimes afraid to have these kind of discussions. And, you know, surely, we're putting ourselves out on a limb by doing this. But I know, I deal with legislation every single day, and still, I found it a challenge to read through it a couple of times before I figured out which ones were double negatives and which really, you know, really I felt that I could support and which ones I couldn't. So, we wanted to come out here and talk about the ones that have the potential to impact education, because it would be worse for us to sit back and do nothing when we knew that there were people who really were struggling to figure out what to do with the amendments. Unfortunately, those of you that show up probably know more than they ever bear because you care and you're here. So, perhaps now you have some tools that you can take to your family and your neighbors and your friends and have these kinds of discussions. It is tough to talk about politics, and my dad always told me not to do it in his company, but amendments might be a little different, because amendments are already to our constitution, and you may be able to talk about those a little easier than you can talk about candidates. But I think talking about issues is easier than talking about people.
It'd be interesting if our writers were here to discuss these.
It would be, yes. Hi.
I come, when I was in Massachusetts, we always had, we had amendments for questions before the ballot. We always have a printed thing in the state attorney's office, this is what this means, this is what that means. If you vote yes, this is what's going to happen. If you vote no, this is what's going to happen. And I'm just, all of a sudden, a couple of weeks ago, I heard, oh, there's 11 amendments. Is there some way, just most stories, it's just courtesy of the state's attorney in Massachusetts that they do, so they let the voters know what they're doing?
Well, about five years ago, isn't it about five years ago, there was a law that said that they were supposed to attach the cost to any constitutional amendment when it went on the ballot. And I asked, I recently called and asked the President, what happened to that? And he said he didn't know. I said, oh, yeah. He said, oh, yeah. We did used to do that. So, that's something I'm going to look into and try to dig down and find out why we're not doing that anymore. And I do have some costs associated with some of these, but unfortunately, they don't come from unbiased sources. The costs, you know, are reported depending on you're opposing it or supporting it. You know, the costs are different. So, I'm not going to take either side on those, take either position on that, because it wouldn't be fair to you to give you a number that may or may not be accurate.
My concern is welcome to Florida. This is the way it's run here.
You're talking to me every time.
That's the law.
It's in the paper. Did you get this?
It's put in the paper. If the posting that the cost is a law...
Is it unvied? From the paper?
It is. I'd like to hear Mr. Sosie's question.
If you can be able to time back the legislature and find out what they made their decision based on what they're following, they're not following it, we need to look at some of that.
Are you talking about money, the importance of money?
What's the money?
Cost is supposed to be associated with the amendment? Like the pregnant pig thing they had? I mean, that's ridiculous. But that's in the constitution.
That is right.
And that's a problem we have whenever you vote for these amendments.
The Office of Budget Accountability has this information on the website, but it's very varied, and it's difficult to unearth if you don't do exactly what you want.
And this amendment three, last sentence, this is payable, I put this table, this is your president's.
Last year, there was a bill put forward called the Tax Payers Bill of Rights. And this is sort of a watered-down version of that. That did not pass, and it was, it was fought by a number of people. And the Colorado example was used last year in why they did it with a film experiment out in Colorado. So this, this is a modified version of that, a very, very watered-down version of that. But we have in place the cap that you would have to hit before there could be any more taxation, but we never hit that cap. So this is an attempt to change the ceiling so that we would reach that cap.
I don't understand what you just said. Can we reach that ceiling?
Well, the amount that the taxes can increase, this asks that the revenue limitation be based on population growth and income growth. And we currently have a cap within our laws about taxes that limits how much we can raise them. But we don't ever reach that limit to where we hit the limitation. So this is lowering that limitation so that it would trigger that sooner.
But this one was only about, last time it had a, voted down by people?
Yes. It wasn't this one exactly.
Right.
So, yeah, similar concept. So that lends to the statement we made earlier, that if a constitution amendment fails, it can be brought back. Sometimes it's brought back with the improvements that the public asks for. Sometimes it's brought back in a more extreme version. Sometimes it's brought back totally cloaked. It really depends on what it is. And, but the fact is, it can be brought back over and over again. But once it passes, it's unlikely that you would be able to overturn it. Yes, sir?
One other question. Do you know how much each, some of these amendments, if they pass, how much it will impact this district?
We have no way of knowing that, because we don't have implementation language. What we do know, even though, as you pointed out, the legislature's like, could put in very reasonable language that does hold everyone accountable. But what they can't change is that if they offer dollars to some everyday religious entities that we're familiar with, they can't stop there. They will have to offer it to all religious entities, because we know that will be breaking federal laws if they pick and choose which religious entities can receive money and which can't. So you cannot rule out that some very extreme religious entities or, you know, organizations that have different types of way of thinking wouldn't qualify. You cannot rule that out at all.
And there are no definitions of what religion is. There's no, so there's, when we were hearing about this, there's a group, a religious group. It's called FONGS for Jesus. They have a website. They're a religious group. They would qualify for these funds. And whether we like it or not, they're a religious group. And it gets, I mean, that's a little extreme, but it is out there and it is real.
What's in it, the FONGS?
Yeah. Somebody told me, and I thought they were kidding, and I actually Googled it, and they have a whole webpage and they sell stuff.
Anybody else? I'm really enjoying this conversation.
Yes, hi.
You mentioned they're changing the legislation. Were they voted by the governor's office or someone else? Or the, or the councilor?
None of these are citizen initiatives.
I understand that. Other groups, like, for example, number 10, that's business. So the Business Council, they want to change?
I'm sorry, I don't have a list of who the supporters and opponents are.
Well, it's a guessing, it's originated from, like, lobbyists. Like, business associations that pay to save money on our personal property tax, they pay our business opponent by adding this amendment. And so therefore, we get our legislators to support that, and they put it on the ballot. Here we go.
Well, you know, nowadays, saying which group supports and opposes isn't much different than saying which party supports or opposes. And we don't want to take sides on that. And we don't want to take, I mean, I can tell you how I'm registered, but I don't...
I understand.
I don't think that it's...
Another way to look at it is, everyone here understands how the political process works. And everybody understands the role of lobbyists and special interests in our government, not just in Florida, but throughout the country. So it, I think you're answering your own question. This is not the, these are not citizen initiatives. These are the legislators, and we don't know. And you can look at what groups support it. It doesn't necessarily have to go along party lines. But, you know, personally, that is the reality of our electoral system, that there are a lot of special interests that have ways of lobbying for their interests and legislators that will or will not support their issues. And that's just a reality. And in a way, that's why it's important for citizens to do their homework and just look at these and find out who's behind them, so you have an understanding. But I think we can almost agree that when we see things like this, there are a lot of special interests behind the scenes that no one's going to own up to sometimes, but that's just the reality, I think, of where we are from what I see.
What a simple observation. Like, in the past, there used to be along State Road 60 and other places, vote for amendment four, vote against amendment two, or whatever proposition was. I haven't seen any of them. I was amazed the other day when I saw this in the newspaper, they had four pages in the press journal for the amendments. So I, you know, laugh against it, but how can you, I hate to say, sneak this in? And here they are, you know, people would be voting in a couple of days, and I'm just surprised. It isn't quite normal, you know?
Is that touched on?
What? Well, they said, I'm just...
For me, it's that if they don't want to be informed, it's hoping they're going to side by.
Yes, sir.
If you want to find out who sponsors the bill, you can get the September issue of Florida Trent. And it's like that. That's sponsored, that one, ten, is sponsored by Nancy Giver and Eric Eisen and all. Both are, I mean, you know, they're...
So just what I want to leave you with today is, please be informed when you're going to vote. And that if you need more information, go to the website that's on the bottom of your sheet there. That's the state's website about the constitutional amendments. Mr. Cersei said you go to Florida Trent. Where did you have that article from? Was it Florida Trent?
Yeah, we have it quoted here. And be involved where you see the budget impact. That's the information that they provided that we cited. Get an idea. And again, we weren't looking at local budget impact, we were looking statewide.
I'm sure the planning will label the voters today.
And then share the information that you have. But when I'm in the grocery store and I hear someone say, just vote all no, just vote yes, I say, no, actually, you need to look at every single one of those amendments separately because there are some that if you were to vote all no, I know if you voted for one, that you really would want a different one to be the opposite. So you need to be informed about what they all say and don't just go in and vote.
There are a couple other meetings about this too, aren't there? And what are the day or the else?
October 16th at 10:00 a.m. at the school district office. And October 16th at Sebastian City Hall at 16:00. Oh, I'm sorry, Sebastian Elementary School.
What date is that?
Sixteen?
Yes.
At what time?
6:00 p.m. At Sebastian Elementary.
Does the school district?
Because...
The two things.
And that if you're from Giffordville, I will be there on the 11th, October 11th, that's that meeting. And at Osceola Magna, if you're from Osceola Magna, I'll be there on the 16th, the second. Anything else? Thank you all very much for coming. And I can stay for a little bit if you want to ask any questions.